Okay, we should be set.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna open the Board, the Village Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole Meeting alongside the Historic Preservation Commission. It's a joint meeting to be held this Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. Roll call.
Trustee Pastuma?
Here.
Trustee Harlow? Not yet. Trust, um, Trustee Burns?
Uh, here.
Trustee Banky?
Here.
Um, Chairman Stifler?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez? No. Commissioner Harlow? No. Commissioner Prisby? Oh, she is. Laurel? Laurel, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, is Bill here too?
I'm here also.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Prisby?
Here.
Commissioner Weinberger?
Here.
Commissioner Braden?
Here.
Commissioner Barclay?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so just to open up the meeting, this was a, um, planned meetings that began on May 4th as these joint meetings to look at Title 14, specifically how we may better preserve certain buildings within the Village of Hinsdale. We held meetings on May 4th, May 8, 18th, June 15th. All of these meetings were led by our Village Planner, Bethany, who is going to speak this evening again tonight. The meeting on, uh, 4 July was postponed till this meeting and we've got this, this evening. We are scheduled to hold these through the end of September as I think the Commissioners and Trustees can see from the voluminous amount of material that was included in here tonight, this is not anything we're gonna get through in a great amount of detail in one hour. Uh, I'd like to, you know, solicit feedback at the end of this meeting if we wanna keep going past September, uh, which I think is gonna be necessary and I'm gonna be supportive of, uh, but just to get that onto everybody's agenda to continue these meetings, uh, an hour before our trustees meeting. So with that, the, um, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Bethany and have her run through the, I mean, Bethany, you don't expect to get through all of this material this evening, do you?
No, I'm gonna keep everything pretty high level. There's a, our zoning code is pretty dense and obviously there's a ton included in that packet that was, uh, so I'm gonna kind of do broad strokes here. And then if there's specific zoning questions, we can either follow up now or if we wanna talk, um, after the meeting or at the next meetings, I think we'll need to, so.
Great, thank you.
But I'm gonna keep it pretty high level, so if there are questions along the way, please feel free to, to interject and, and ask questions. So with that, um, just to remind everyone, um, and Chairman Stifler did, um, give a little bit of a, an intro here, we have been talking about, um, preservation incentives for the last couple of meetings and possible ways that we can, um, achieve this to incentivize preservation and encourage homeowners to choose, um, you know, restoring their building or their home, um, versus demolition and new construction. So one of the major items that we've been focusing on right now is zoning relief. There are other preservation incentives that we're gonna be dealing with in, um, future meetings, but this meeting will deal with zoning relief. Um, so originally, um, everything that's coming out here is additional time that staff has spent, um, to, you know, look further into the zoning relief. Only two options were originally provided in, um, the draft, um, regulations from last year of August 2020 that were included in your packet in Exhibit 1. We've kinda started diving further into this. Before I get into kind of the extra zoning relief options that staff took a look at, um, I just wanna do a quick overview of existing zoning code sections, just so everyone knows what I'm talking about as, um, we go through. So, and I can also refer you into the packet if you would like to follow along. The best place to take a look right now, we're on Page 2 for these existing zoning code regulations. Section 3-110 is what is, um, includes all of our general bulk requirements. So this is where if you were gonna build a house anywhere in the R1 District, you would go look at your setback requirements within this section. Um, this is the underlying zoning, uh, district requirements. However, in the Village of Hinsdale, we have a lot of buildings themselves that are non-conforming and we also have a lot of lots that are non-conforming. So a non-conforming lot is something, um, that doesn't meet, for example, minimum lot area, so it's not big enough, um, to, to be a certain size, uh, that's required per Section 3-110. Therefore, they would be subject, those non-conforming lots would be subject to Section 10-105. Pre-code structures are, are, um, for Section 10-104 and though, that's for example, a house that might have been legally established at one point, the zoning codes changed, but they might not have like a side setback that's in any way, now it's not compliant. They might be too close to that side lot line. And then we also included in your packet several, um, of these bulk regulation definitions and those are listed in Section 12-206. So these are the base, you know, you know, zoning code sections that really apply to single-family homes, which is what we've been looking at a little bit more thoroughly here. We've received, staff has received for years, feedback that the existing zoning code is not user-friendly, you have to bump back and forth between all these sections and because there's so many non-conforming situations in the village, it's really hard to apply these, um, to single-family homes and especially ones that are old homes, it, it can become cumbersome to actually add a renovation, modernize these homes, uh, versus just a clean slate demolition and new construction. So we've tried to look at these, how can we build upon these sections but make something a little bit more user-friendly? So, included in Exhibit, um, 4, the last portion of the packet, was, this is, um, staff's first shot at putting together some bulk regulations that build upon the existing but provide a little bit more zoning relief to allow for some of these non-conforming situations, but also will make it easier, um, for homeowners that have existing historic buildings to be able to construct that addition that we're talking about. So it kind of incentivizes that of, you can get a little bit more, um, in terms of this by right zoning relief, um, if you have this historically identified and can take advantage of these regulations. This is a first stab at it and, um, I'll go into some four examples that we looked at in particular, um, so these are by no means set in stone, but it is our first stab at, based on our existing regulations, what could we do that might actually help, um, homeowners choose to preserve their house and, and with some modernization allowances? Um, and then with feedback tonight and hopefully from the Board moving forward, um, we would like to, you know, we could possibly do this through that historic overlay district, which is what we talked about at our last meeting, um, as well as put actual language, drafted code language. Right now, this is just a preliminary table of compliance, but it's, you know, a way to at least start the conversation. Well, just to remind everyone, this is our village zoning map. What the original code amendment from last year of August 2020 included was, um, looking at possibly just landmark properties and properties that would be in the Robins Park Historic District. So what we're kinda talking about now is looking at bulk regulations that largely would be to a identified geographic area potentially through that zoning overlay district, but it would apply to the single-family zoning lots because that's what we've been seeing a lot of the demolition for right now. So that's the, um, yellow, orange, and red areas of the village, which is a lot of the village. Um, like I said, we would need to still identify through these list of historic homes, but it would be a way that we could possibly offer these incentives, not require them, but, but at least we'd be able to target not just properties in Robins Park, but we know there's historic properties outside. So this is a way that we could offer something to other properties in the village at large. So, I'm gonna quickly go over this table of compliance. Um, like I said, this is in Exhibit 4. I won't focus too much on these, just so I don't lose everyone, but feel free to ask specific questions if it, if it does help. So with this table of compliance that we have here, there's a couple of major changes, minor changes I should say, from our existing code regulations. The first is that, um, we have removed the requirements for building height because we would still be technically regulating, you know, the projecting portion of a building through building elevation. Um, so we found that because building height is kind of the vertical distance from the grade to, like, for most gabled, you know, pitched roofs, buildings with pitched roof, to the mean of that height between the principal eve and the top, it's the mean height, um, that's not the best effective way to determine when you're trying to do an addition on a building, what that actual height is gonna be. So we kind of got rid of building height and are looking at, um, potentially regulating, you know, how a building might come out of the ground through building elevation. Um, so this would be the vertical distance from the one foot above the top of the foundation to the highest point of a building or structure. But in this case, if someone was going to be retrofitting an existing building, what our regulations are saying is that, that building elevation of that addition can't go above the highest peak of, like, the ridge of the existing building. So you're not gonna have a building addition that is looming over the existing historic building. You have to be capped at that highest ridge line. So that's what these regulations would be proposing. Versus, right now in our code, there's, um, several different, uh, calculations that you can do for both of these that isn't quite as simple and straightforward. So this is a way of hopefully, um, simplifying it and making it so that you have a, an addition that would be compatible with the existing building. We haven't, uh, the big thing for minimum lot area and dimensions, obviously we're dealing with existing properties and structures, so there's, um, code language in here about existing lot area and dimensions are not to be reduced. This is so that someone who's taking advantage of historic preservation incentives can't just subdivide their property and sell it off for the guise of, um, historic preservation. If they did, there would be another process potentially that they'd have to go through, um, to subdivide. For minimum yards, um, in general, the front yards are, are similar to what our current code allows, which is block average is the front yard, uh, required, but you wouldn't be allowed, uh, less than the existing front yard setback of the structure. I'll show a couple of these in examples a little bit later. Um, the biggest one is we, these would allow a little bit of a reduced rear yard, so that that's where the building addition would be able to encroach a little bit further. Um, obviously, that's where building additions are, are normally located in the rear yard. So that would give a little bit more relief. And then there is some changes to side yards. A lot of what we found, um, in looking at other structures and when people are trying to add a room or it turns into a side yard addition, um, and so what we've really done here is our code right now says, you have to pick whatever is greater, which is either, um, you can't have 10 feet from any side lot line in the R1 and R2 or 6 feet in the R3 or R4 districts, or whatever your existing side yard setback is. All we've done is just simplify it and say, we're keeping the exact same minimum, either the 10 feet or the 6 feet. So we've really just gotten rid of the crazy calculation and kept that exact same minimum. We didn't add something different. It's just taking away what would have been greater, which could give people theoretically several more feet, which really can help with how much you need for a new kitchen or that, that room getting tiny bit larger. Maximum floor area ratio, um, floor area ratio has been tricky, um, where it can be manipulated with new construction. It's a little bit harder when you have a large historic three-story tall building that has tall attics, tall raised ceilings, and so there is less floor area ratio to use for a building addition later. So we've removed that and, you know, um, any sort of addition would then be, continue to be, um, regulated through building coverage, lot coverage, maximum elevation. So it's not like you're allowing, you know, the bulk and mass of a building to be completely out of control, they're still regulated by these other, um, zoning tools that we have here. Um, we did look at if building coverage, uh, was something that we'd want to play around with. We looked at over 10 cases, which aren't included here, but we did a couple more today and we haven't really found that there's a lot of warrant, uh, at this time for increasing building coverage, but that's something we can talk about further here.
You know, Bethany and Rob, what are the two or three biggest, uh, restrictions when someone tries to renovate a historic property? Is it FAR that we're eliminating here? Is it rear yard?
On a historic property, probably FAR first, setbacks, uh, a lot of times you're running up against setback problems. Uh, on the small lots, Jim and I talked today about that, on the small lots, you end up running out of building coverage first, but we came up with about 10 test cases today where we looked at, where we used the, the historic, um, list, the, the, the map with the historic homes on it, and then we looked at lots in the, the R2 and the R4, just to kinda get a benchmark and most of those properties were on larger lots. So it's not like you're gonna find a historic home on a 50 by 125.
Okay.
You just don't see a lot of that. So, um, we, we use an average barring, like, one case where somebody was actually over, I don't think you're gonna have a problem with the 25% building coverage.
Okay.
In the case of, when we did look at some test cases, like, most recently 318 South Garfield, they needed FAR and lot coverage in order to do that, uh, kinda solarium or mudroom or whatever on the back of the house. And then, based on this proposal, they wouldn't have needed to go to the ZBA. I'm not saying it's gonna work in all cases.
Right.
That would be exceptional, right? That's the reason you have a ZBA, but in, in, in many cases, we, we went as far as staff was comfortable going with this proposal.
Thanks.
And based on the cases that we looked at, there isn't gonna be, um, a one-size-fits-all. We're trying to do regulations that tie into our current regulations, but is trying to be overreaching over many different circumstances. We're always gonna have, I think, those unique cases where someone will, you know, potentially still need to get a variation. If someone's asking to put their building addition two feet from, you know, the side lot line, that's something that probably should need a, a variation because you're gonna be building your addition two feet potentially next to your neighbor. So that's where, we don't wanna just throw all the rules out, there needs to be some, um, basis for everything, but we're trying to give a little bit of leeway within the existing rules, the way we have them set right now. The one thing that we did increase though, just to finish with this table, is, um, we did add, uh, 10% extra, the code requirements in Section 3-110 right now allow for 50% lot area, lot coverage, and we've gone up to 60% just because we thought that that would help with, you know, these additions, with these, uh, poolhouse structures, detached structures, that's something that, that could help a bit, especially if you have patios and pools. Um, so we, we did add that and then we added some conditional language that provided there's no adverse impacts to your neighbors. So you can't have your stormwater flowing off, right, to, um, your neighbor's property. So, um, to put some of the garbled language that I just said into context, we're gonna look at the four examples that were included in your packet. These are, these, three of these are, are one, uh, red, are one zoned properties and they are relatively large lots, but, uh, they're, they're pretty good cases to look at and one's an R4 property. So the first one we took a look at was 244 East First Street. I believe this, um, this house has been demolished since this, uh, was taken. But this property was considered an existing non-conforming corner lot in the R1 District, this was in the Robins Park District. You can see that it was non-conforming in terms of, in this table below, it was too small, it didn't, it wasn't large enough, even though it was a relatively large lot, it still was slightly too small, um, for the lot area. And this also had, um, and it's, I believe the south, the rear setback, um, was non-conforming as well. So this would have been subject to Section 10-104 for those pre-code structures that we talked about previously.
Bethany, uh, perhaps, and this is a germane comment, but you should know that originally that was one property. And the house on, uh, the second house going south of the 244 was the Coach House to 244 in 1947, I believe. That house was picked up and turned 45 degrees to face Elm Street.
The, the Coach House or the primary house?
The Coach House.
Okay.
So, when they subdivided that property, they created these situations.
Oh, so it was actually originally a larger home?
Correct.
Got it, a larger lot.
Which, I only mention that because, um, you might wanna address the fact that some of these properties shouldn't or couldn't be subdivided.
Right.
Because they create this non-conformity.
Right. Well, that explains that rear lot line then.
Exactly.
That, um, so, we use the plat that we had on file, which is obviously the one that was after, uh, it was subdivided, and this does have the existing non-conforming rear lot, just to get everyone oriented, if, I don't know if you can see, but if you're, the north portion, if you're looking at this on the plat, that is north, the true north. So the front yard is, is on the north side. Um, with this case, when we took it, the existing, um, code required setbacks versus what would be if we had this new historic district overlay district and regulations, they would, essentially the front yard would not have changed, um, in terms of the block average. The corner side yard would not have changed, uh, in this case, but where they did get relief, um, was they would have gotten an additional five feet for that interior side setback, um, and then they would have gotten some extra, about eight feet, a little over eight feet for that rear yard setback. So in a case like this, number one, this made the rear yard setback actually all of a sudden conforming when it didn't conform before, and we got a little bit more flexibility and room to, if you can imagine, oops, build that addition. Um, if they were going to be retrofitting this building, modernizing it, they would have had a little bit more room on the southwest corner to build that addition. Any questions about this case before I move on to the next one? Okay, the next one we looked at was 306 East First Street. Um, so this was also considered an existing non-conforming corner lot in the R1 District, it's also in Robins Park. Um, so these, they would have been subject to the same requirements as the previous house we looked at. Their lot is slightly too small as well, um, for the requirements under Section 3-110.
Here again, I would comment.
Yep.
That there was a Coach House to the south of this house.
Same situation.
That was allowed to be sold off, subsequently knocked down, and a home was built. So this was a conforming lot.
So in this case, when we applied, um, the, the proposed, you know, zoning relief, um, front, front block, uh, we didn't quite know the existing one because we're going off of, um, you know, estimates here for block average, but front yard generally would not have changed. This one, um, provided a tiny bit of relief, a, a little over two feet for the corner side setback, which would have been off of Elm Street. But your, your bigger, uh, relief was provided for the interior side yard where you would have gotten an extra five, a little over extra five feet, and the rear yard where you've gotten, would have gotten about eight and a half feet. So in this case, it does help. This is obviously a larger lot where they had a little bit more room to play with, but something like this could also, think about this in terms of, you saw back in those pictures, how tall a building like this was. So think about on a building addition and what that elevation could be, um, versus, you know, limiting the building height in FAR. This could be a really good case where a building addition is feasible in all that area to the, um, east and of the building. So, we've also, um, staff has also been approached about 420 South Park, so we included this. This property is also in the R1 District, um, and it's non-conforming, um, in terms of the lot size. Uh, this is obviously a very, uh, irregularly shaped lot. So this one has its own challenges, it's a little bit unique, um...
Once again, I would comment. Allowed to be subdivided.
I got briefed over here that it was coming.
Sometimes we create our own problems, is where I'm going.
So we're, these three cases are very similar, they're all the same zoning district, all the same Coach House fiascos, so, um, but this one actually, we, when we look at, you know, because of the irregularities of the lot size and how it's on the curve, um, this house would really benefit from some sort of zoning relief, um, by right. So, based on when we applied the zoning relief and what was being proposed, they would have gotten an extra, and you can kinda see on the, um, on the rear and the, the side, um, the interior side, they would have gotten an extra, a little over seven feet on the interior side, as well as about 10, almost 10 and a half feet for, um, the rear property. So what that did in this case is that allows, uh, quite a bit more room to, and, and, you know, just to allow for like, something like a, a small little addition to the south of the building or even a garage, and this is a really good case where it probably would make a, a huge difference. And the last property we looked at was 33 East Fifth Street. This property is a conforming corner lot in the R4 District. However, this property is very large, um, it's a historically large property, and so R4 is generally the smaller lots that, that would allow. So we actually had a lot more wiggle room to deal with on this property. So, they did get a lot of, um, you know, relief in terms of, they got an extra 14 feet for the corner side, an extra 10 feet for the interior side, an extra 10 feet for the rear yard, but because they had so much room already, it didn't make as big of a difference here. But if we go back to the pictures of what this house looks like, this is a very tall, you know, historic home, three stories with a turret, and, um, so they immediately would have less room to deal with in terms of FAR and, uh, making that work with an addition on the rear and side here. So here, it's not much of the setbacks that really helped in this case, but when you think about what the building elevation could be for this and when you think about the floor area ratio, this is a property where it probably would make a big difference. Any questions so far on any of these cases? Okay. So, one of the things that, um, I just wanna bring up a couple of items here that were included in the packet, um, so as we talked about previously in some other, uh, of the Committee of the Whole Meetings, um, this is possibly, uh, something that could be done through that zoning overlay district. So we'd keep all of our zoning, you know, base underlying districts the same, but we potentially would have the Historic Preservation Commission or the Village be able to figure out which properties this could apply to. We could figure out what it actually means to be in the Robins Park District, but we would be able to hopefully incorporate scattered sites throughout the village. So, um, that's something that I know Michael Mars, our Village Attorney, was looking into and might be a viable option, and it, um, at the last meeting, he did give that packet of examples of where other communities were actually doing it through, through the zoning overlay. That ties into who should be eligible. I think the original, um, incentive package, uh, that was in Exhibit 1, that originally just thought about contributing properties in Robins Park as well as landmark properties. We know in this village, uh, getting people to landmark their home is extremely challenging and I think there's a lot of fear behind some of that, so allowing this maybe through that zoning overlay district might be something that would help people, you know, just get it by right and hopefully they would be able to take advantage of it. They don't have to take advantage of it, but it would be there, subject to them potentially selling their property. And then there are still questions around what this review and approval process should be. Um, as we talked about two meetings ago, staff had gotten a lot of feedback from residents, builders, architects on, um, any new regulations that we adopt. We wanna make sure that we're not creating too many more hurdles for homeowners to take advantage of these incentives. Um, you know, the, we, we got a lot of feedback that because the variation process takes three to four months to go through and people are very concerned that they're gonna have objections from their neighbors, um, they're concerned that they might not even get approval if they go through this entire four-month process, um, so we were kind of tasked with, if we allow these incentives, how do we make sure we kind of, you know, tackle those, those concerns?
Bethany, I have a quick question regarding contributing and non-contributing?
Yep.
Especially in the Robins Park District. Are we looking at any non-contributing? Cause I feel like a lot of those homes, since the original surveys, are now coming up on, um, you know, my home, for example, is from 1957, were non-contributing. But I think, you know, as time goes by, a lot of those structures will be eligible?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, um, I don't think there's, the, the biggest thing is we have to identify that list. And, um, I think we talked about a couple meetings ago of what it would mean to resurvey and I think there was kind of, there was kind of some feelings of, it might not be the best use of village money at this time. But the hope is that we'd have a process. Excuse me. We'd have a process where we'd be able to add any properties later down the road.
And people could maybe, sorry, yeah, apply, based on maybe a five-piece criteria, um, age, architecture, um, you know, all the, the, and I think in this, you know, did something historic happen on the property? I think those are kind of the, the general list that, you know, many municipalities have. But, um, if people could apply, um, especially for some of those new, um, we're seeing a big swallow of mid-century modern homes now are being rehabbed and renovated, and while maybe they were built in the 60s. Sorry, it could be something that we'd wanna look at, so kind of a two-piece where we identify and then it can be a voluntary, uh, quick application process too.
Right. Yeah, and that's something that, um, as we move forward with drafting actual, like, language for an ordinance, that's something we'd wanna figure out of, what does it mean to actually add yourself to that process and that list? And that's something I know we would wanna talk to Michael Mars about as well. Especially if it's a zoning overlay district, what's the legal way to add someone to that district? Does it actually need to be a text, like a map amendment, for example? One would hope there's an easier way, so we would explore that. Did that answer the question? Um, and then one thing that was included in this packet as well, um, that'll get to item number four, it's, uh, up here, is, um, while we don't wanna obviously create more roadblocks, we have to keep going back that if people are gonna be on this list taking advantage of these, like, incentives, the whole reason that they're eligible for these incentives is that they are, you know, engaging in historic preservation. They're not just demoing their home, uh, but there has to be actual historic preservation behind it and theoretically it would be probably warranted to have our... to have our Historic Preservation Commission review these projects that are coming forward. And if, you know, you could say this would be an easier process still than going to the very, like through a variation, because you wouldn't need to potentially have the historic, like the, you wouldn't need to do an actual public hearing. You could potentially do a public meeting, and then we could look at what actual public notifications, if any, would be required of something like this. And the reason that we want someone to potentially be looking at is this actually historic preservation ties into these standards for approval, which if we were to adopt some sort of code, we probably would want some standards for approval that basically just talk about general, you know, in line with the Secretary of Interior standards, which is kind of like the bible for preservation and how you should be upholding projects of, there are certain things that you should do with good additions. It doesn't mean that an addition has to look like the historic building. You can see in one of the pictures up here, that's the bank building. They did a really modern addition onto this. But it's completely within the character of the building. It's still respectful to the scale and size, and so are all these examples up here. But this came up at a couple of our last meetings where we talked about this facadeism. What if someone comes forward and says, "We want to get all this zoning relief, and we want to build this giant addition under the guise of historic preservation, but really what they're trying to do is just keep a little piece of the facade and then tack on a giant building behind it," like this example. So I know we're not going to see this in the Village of Hinsdale, but this is a great example of like, they want all this zoning relief, and now all of a sudden we got a 20-story building on top. That's obviously not the case in Hinsdale, and this is not what our zoning would allow for. But it's the whole guise of we don't want to say this is for preservation when we're really just trying to build a 20-story skyscraper.
I think we talked about this at the last HPC meeting. I might be one of the only people, I'm all for facades right now because at least we're preserving our streetscape, especially in the Robbins Park Historic District. I mean, I would love to see, you know, say, the old Dean home, for example, to have that facade still be up, and then get it on the inside. At least it preserves that look, especially for your neighbors. Just a side note there.
Well, and that's something that we probably want to talk about of, if we do some sort of standards of approval, and this was included in the packet, too, of like, you know, we might need to look at what our, for example, our definitions of demolition means because that might actually trigger, we have to go back and revise that definition now to determine how much should you actually be saving? What does this village feel comfortable with? And like I said, there's plenty of guidelines out there where, you know, it's very basic of what you should and shouldn't do with certain additions. And it's not to limit people, these are very general guidelines of, you know, you want to be respectful of the character of the neighborhood, the historic context of the neighborhood, which are all things that we probably want in general right now, but within the context of that historic building.
Bethany, just to offer a counterargument to what we've been discussing over the past few minutes. You know, several months ago, I think staff and, you know, Jim, you were on this call talking to builders about, you know, what are the big barriers for doing this? If we created an approval process, whether it's through HPC or some other body, does that just add another body that's looking at, you know, substituting the ZBA for another approval process? Does that just continue to hold up barriers that would stop builders from renovating versus tearing down?
That's a really good question, yeah. And I know in other, I don't have a perfect answer. These are the kind of things that we want some feedback on, I think. But I will say, I know there are some places where, depending on certain projects, they've allowed staff to do administrative reviews. So that's another option that I've seen.
Chairman, if I could offer my thoughts on that. So obviously, I was part of that phone call, and there were two takeaways, at least for me, is people want certainty, right? Which is part of the reason we were talking about using the HPC as kind of the approver rather than the ZBA, which is stuck kind of adhering to a set of standards, right? So there should be some body at least looking at that project, other than staff. So you codify a set of standards that can be applied administratively, but then use the HPC as the body to hear that. And again, at a public meeting, not a public hearing. So we don't have the notice requirements, we cut time, and most importantly, we remove the neighbor influence. If the standards are codified, then we're less likely to get an objecting neighbor.
What's the timing on something like that?
Well, that's a meeting. It's a month rather than three months.
And if there, I mean, if it had to be published in the newspaper, we are talking like a month and a half, but that's it, yeah.
And that's still up in the air. That's entirely up to you guys.
I would look at it as to eye towards, you know, I guess, conceptually, I'm okay with a body such as HPC reviewing it. It's just I want to make sure we try and stick to what our original goal was, which is certainty for the builder and timeliness, whether it's the builder or a homeowner.
And I think, at least what I would envision for something like this is it's not to say the HPC might say, "You can't have the zoning relief, per se." It's that, is that project that you're proposing meeting our, you know, general tenants of preservation? That's at least how I look at it of like, once again, especially if we're relaxing elevation, you know, are we definitely sure that, you know, they're keeping this amount of the facade? Is it actual preservation, or is it like, we're keeping the little turret at the corner of the building and trying to get the zoning relief from that? And just making sure that those standards for preservation are there. Because once again, the reason people are getting this is because of the preservation. So we should have that tied back to it.
Understood. Just wanted to offer a counterpoint.
Yeah, no, it's a good one that we've struggled with, too, especially because we do want to expedite that process. I think that's a huge goal.
And a key piece of this, that other takeaway, was, I think it was a comment that maybe Dave Knight had mentioned. You want to create an environment where you've got a list of these exceptional homes, a list that people are clamoring to get on rather than off.
Right.
So the goal is for the HPC to come up with this list of homes truly worth saving and create an environment where people are excited, reaching out to the commissioner saying, "Hey, how do I get on this list? Because it puts me in a position that my next-door neighbor's not when it comes to whether they want to scrape a house or not."
Good, thank you.
Okay, so there's two things that I can, we have a little bit of time for questions. And then there's two things we want to first make sure that we have a, you know, some discussion on our upcoming meeting schedule if we want to go past September. And then staff would like to know if there's a consensus that, should we move forward? Should we start looking at official code language? And how does everyone so far feel about the zoning questions? Also, I know it's a lot to digest, so if there's questions, we obviously can answer them.
Yep. Jim, I'm going to direct this question towards you, but given what's, and I know you've looked at this extensively. You know, if something similar to this is passed and we look two or three years down the road, how many examples of homes do you think will be saved? I mean, how productive will this be? Does it go far enough to make this?
Well, it's hard to say.
Where we actually see benefit. I know it's an impossible question.
But what I've already seen on this chart, this Exhibit 4, I've kind of reviewed this with some of the houses we've done in the past, some stuff we've actually got on the table now. And it's all terrific stuff. One of the things I like about it is it's essentially taking what we already have in the code, other than a change to the rear yard setbacks. It's already in there. So we're just taking the best parts of those three sections and saying, "Let's clean this up, let's keep it simple, and make it usable for everyone that wants to add on to an historic home." So I think what we have right now is terrific. I hope that answers your question.
It does. I know it's a tough question.
Bethany and Rob, again, par last meeting, we talked about how Title 14 could now live in the zoning code, and these incentives are great. They're just incentives. Are we looking at anything else beyond? I know I sound like a broken record about demo by neglect and pre-demolition sales, et cetera. I know it's really tough being non-home role. Will there be any opportunity to, while it probably wouldn't live in the zoning code, but will we have an opportunity to think about some kind of more extensive measures outside of incentives to protect some of these homes?
Well, Title 14's still on deck. So I know that President Colley wanted to focus on the carrots, the sticks.
Right, right, sure.
In that order. So what we anticipated was moving this forward as a text amendment to the zoning code, and then Title 14 would follow as an amendment to the municipal code. So I, they'll dovetail in.
They will, okay.
I mean, at the end of the day, we're hoping to accomplish the same thing.
Okay.
But we're kind of on two different tracks.
Right, just to reiterate, all the work, all the work that has been done.
Press the button.
All the work that the HPC has done is waiting a bit just so we can get through this process.
For that makes sense.
Because what continues to be stated is, there's nothing to save these homes. There's nothing to save these homes, right? And we're helpless. So the thought is, let's get something on the books so that when something pops up, we have something in the toolbox. And then we can go to the other end of it, the sticks and the other regulations.
I like that. Okay, good, thank you.
And we purposely broke that up and put it into separate buckets because we just figured it was too much to take on all of those.
A couple of questions, just. So Bethany, from just a hierarchy of objectives, I think that this exercise is about specifically saving some historic homes. Not some, but as many as we can. But I think in addition to that, I think that there's, as part of this exercise, it would be very helpful to have beyond just a regional bias because we're very focused on specific areas within town to save certain homes. But, I mean, just as an example, my house is almost 100 years old. It's by no means historic, by no means particularly with my living there. But nonetheless, it's one of the things where I would love my kids and my grandkids someday to be able to drive past that house, and that the same incentives which are being provided to save these specific homes in some way could be translated or transferred into the broader neighborhoods so that we are not only just preserving specific homes, but we're, to a degree, discouraging the notion of tearing down homes. You know, we've got homes that are mid-century modern, which right now are approaching 60, 70 years old in and of themselves. And in and of themselves, I mean, I would say within the village, those are probably the most pervasive of being torn down over the last, you know, 20 years simply because, you know, they didn't fit a style or, you know, a mindset of something that was worth saving. Now that mindset has changed. And so as we're going through this exercise, if, first of all, I think you guys have done fantastic work. But if it's possible, where we also are thinking about this in a relationship to how this would transfer into the broader Hinsdale area and just beyond, you know, Robbins Park or these specific areas, I think that that would also be a useful exercise.
One nice thing about, if we did this through a zoning overlay district, too, you could potentially do a whole geographic region. So there could be, it doesn't have to be necessarily scattered sites. There could be a whole, you know, block, for example. You know, these are the kind of things that we can take a look at. And I think the goal really is to make an easy process so you can get on these later, especially for mid-century modern homes. We know that more and more of these are coming up, and how do we just? And we also could just miss a couple of properties on this list. We have a giant village here, right? So there's definitely ways where if we miss something, we want a way to add it later down the road. And hopefully not, like I said, if it's a zoning overlay district, not have to amend, do a map amendment technically.
Right, and we seem, hung up is not the right word, but we're, this notion of historic.
Right.
You know, let's focus on preservation, where we're thinking about the neighborhood, our neighborhoods in context of what is there and it's worth saving versus because it has some, you know, historic relevance, well, I mean, that is important, but it isn't, I don't think that's the overriding factor of what we're trying to do here.
Well, I will tell you a fun story of the village I used to work in. They had a, their village hall was built in 1990. And when they first made their landmark ordinance, the first property that they landmarked was village hall because it is a really amazing building. And they put it in the landmark, you know, as one of the landmark properties, one of the first, but it was built in 1990. So it was more of, they wanted it preserved for the architectural merit that it was, not necessarily that it was historic. So that's kind of what you're saying.
Absolutely, and there's a real value in it, and that's a great story.
Yeah.
That one doesn't work. Harlow Luke's.
All right, I'll try to speak a little louder. Rob, you had said something about trying to limit neighbor input. Could you elaborate that? I mean, I know we talk about a lot of other things where we say, "Hey, let's see what the neighbors think." And so that's, what you were saying seemed kind of counter to how we approach a lot of other issues.
So in several cases where we've had variation requests move forward to the ZBA, it's in the form of a public hearing. There's notice requirements, everybody within 250 feet. And we've had several cases where we've got an abutting owner show up to object. And although neighbor buy-in isn't one of the standards listed in the code, the ZBA's always been cognizant of that neighbor input. And while we're not looking to ice out the neighbors, we're trying to balance what's fair and reasonable with this, with these relaxed zoning provisions against what we think is going to fly and not create a ton of pushback from the neighbors. There's a specific case that I don't want to mention because I think the house is still on the market, where we had somebody look at it and actually had an architect come out and looked at the idea of maybe being able to get an attached garage on it. And apparently, the next-door neighbor came out and threatened to sue him before they ever had a contract signed or closed on the property. And as a result, the deal died. So we're trying to be cognizant of the fact that we've got property rights, right? And we have neighbors next door against what's fair and reasonable.
Right.
What we could get our arms around, what is likely not going to be able to, or what likely won't create negative impacts for the guy next door.
So I guess if we're relaxing criteria and those are objective, then there shouldn't be a reason to seek a further variance, right?
Correct.
But if there is a variance even from those criteria, it seems like you do need to get.
That's why we, that's why we recommended the numbers that we recommended. We didn't feel comfortable pushing any further than that. If somebody needs, you know, a five-foot side yard setback, then that absolutely is something that should go to the ZBA, and the neighbors should be aware of it.
We've discussed this before, and it gets into, everybody's, everybody is supportive of historic preservation so long as it doesn't affect them. You know, so I think as trustees, as commissioners, we need to look at this and say, "Okay, what type of standard are we going to set to the village? And what type of standard are we comfortable imposing on everyone equally?" You know, whether it's in your backyard or somebody else's.
And I will just like to say, any of the changes that we actually do here will have to go through the formal text amendment process, meaning that as part of our code right now, everyone, all these properties we're talking about, as well as all their neighbors, will have to get noticed as part of that text amendment. So it's not like we can even hide it, you know, that you might be in one of these properties or your neighbor might be in one. You will be notified as part of that process.
Right, this is a text amendment. This would go to the plan commission. There'd be, you know, public hearings, there'd be plenty of public notice, and plenty of opportunity for, you know, objections to be noted.
Noting the time, it's at 7:20. We've probably got about seven or eight minutes left. Other comments from commissioners or trustees, questions?
Hey Luke, it's Phil Harlow. Can you hear me?
Very well.
I guess I've got two comments along the lines of what we've been talking about the last few minutes. In terms of the proposed potential overlay district, Bethany, you mentioned total lot coverage rising up to 60%. It seems to me that perhaps, as it's currently on Exhibit 4, that you would need to have some language about, you know, if there are adverse impacts determined, that then it defaults to the current code and that percentage. But I also think that, to Rob, I believe it was Rob McGinnis who was making this point, provided that there are no adverse impacts on adjacent properties. So that would seem to support the idea that there has to be a deliberative body, perhaps the Historic Preservation Commission, but perhaps another group in addition to staff, both with the professional input of staff to help determine what adverse impacts there might be or might not be, whether it warrants, you know, nod awarding to 60%. it warrants, you know, nod awarding to 60%, but there's got to be some way to adjudicate that, it seems to me. And so, that would seem, I think, to be an argument for having HPC or some other group have some say in that, because otherwise, I don't know how we determine what, you know, whether there are adverse impacts or not. There's got to be some discussion of that, I think, that goes beyond staff making, you know, a well-meaning, but in some sense, kind of non-public determination. I'll just, I'll stop there.
Rob, doesn't engineering review all these?
Well, I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm just trying to figure out, it's chicken and egg, so.
Because what ends up happening is, if you're at 60% with 40% available, if you're going to have some kind of grading on your property that's detrimental to the neighbor, you have to address that with your grading.
And you have to manage your off-site flows.
Right, so you're putting in well, dry wells and other things, French drains.
I don't think there's been a single addition approved since I've been here that engineering hasn't required a detailed grading plan on. I'm not sure that the HPC wants to be in a position of having to try and evaluate off-site flows. You'd just as soon have that engineering approved by the time you guys saw it, but then we're kind of into a chicken and egg thing. What I heard loud and clear during that call we had early on was that people wanted certainty. If they don't know whether they can avail themselves of that relaxed zoning relief until they invest, until they're all in on working drawings, there may be some reluctance to pull the trigger. But to your point, yes. In almost all cases, engineering requires a pretty comprehensive grading plan, prepared by an Illinois licensed land surveyor engineer as part of that permit. And additionally, anything over 2,000 square foot requires a Tewahatchee County stormwater permit, which has its own set of requirements. So, Bill's point was absolutely well-taken. I mean, who decides? We rely on DUNAS, you know, on a third-party engineer to evaluate those grading plans.
Those have to be state-licensed and county-submitted or whatever.
It should be, it should be engineering, whether it's 60% coverage or 30% coverage.
I agree.
I agree. Okay. Other comments, Bill? Okay, hearing none. Bethany, schedule?
So, right now, we are set, if you guys are okay with it, for continuing this conversation on September 7th and September 21st, before the board meetings. Is that something that everyone's comfortable with? So, for that meeting, there's a couple of options. If everyone's also okay, we can start looking at drafting formal language. That will take us some time to do, we'll start working with our village attorney, if that is preferred.
I think that's, I think that's reasonable, and I think that, you know, we should just have the expectation that we probably aren't going to get through everything by the end of September, and we'll push this into October. But I think it's important to keep the momentum going here. And actually, the momentum will pick up once we get to two meetings a month.
And in the case that we probably will not have draft language for the September 7th meeting, we can go back and start talking about some of those other preservation incentives that we haven't totally dove into yet. That was like building permit, fee waivers, you know, we had the potentially property tax waivers. There is a couple of other items that I think we started looking into, and we just haven't had a moment to discuss yet. So, we can kind of go back to those, because those are something we could theoretically include as part of this, you know?
I think we should include those, and I think they'll be quick conversations.
Okay.
That's my opinion. Okay. Given that we are at 7:26, closing comments, questions from anyone? Do we have to take a roll call vote to close the meeting?
Do it by voice.
All in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.